I'm going to see if Howard's giving me the signal. He does. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a work session regarding consolidation of committees from the Eileen, Dondaro, Foley City Council chambers. We're a little bit late, and we're going to be continuing with a city council meeting hereafter. The starting time was seven. We may be a little later than that. But in the first instance, the work session tonight is about consolidation of committees and restructuring. You have significant materials that have been placed in your binder, and we should be ready to go and have a fruitful discussion. And I'd like to recognize Counsel Dwyer, if she would like to outline a bit of where we are.
Sure. Here's where I think we are, and what I think the purpose of the work session is. Several months ago, when the idea of consolidation of committees had come up, actually had come up last year as well, or last term as well, the mayor appointed Counsel Smith, Counsel Panellakis, and myself to propose, to consider what that might look like, and to propose some ideas, which we did at one council meeting. We proposed a series of ideas to you all for discussion. And as often happens, you know, sometime after nine or 9:30, we didn't really have opportunity then for discussion in the council. So this work session is really the opportunity to do that. And I think that what we wanted to discuss first, because we set up the various options we came up with first, would be the creation of a -- and I'm saying this not to limit this, but to say this is what we might discuss first, a new recreation parks and open space committee that would assume the functions of the existing recreation, Pierce Island Cemetery and Dog Committees, or some permutations thereof. There are other consolidations that we proposed as well, but in the spirit of kind of taking them one at a time, that seemed to be the one to start with, partly because it affects a number of people, partly because there are a number of appointments pending to recreation. And then let me add just a few other things about this. The idea of the parks and open space, I think, came about, the idea of needing that we needed to do something about parks and open space. We had a request from the folks that are Friends of Jones Avenue Sagamore area that prompted discussion about whether we did need to add -- they were asking to be a committee, essentially. They were asking to be more formalized, and that was sort of, you know, one kind of avenue into this. Realizing that, as we began to talk about middle school, as we talked about fields, as when we passed the CIP this year, citizens came forth suggesting that we needed a recreation plan. Clearly, much more needs to happen with recreation planning than we have been doing in the city. It seems like the next, kind of one of the next frontiers. So with the convergence of people being interested in open space, and I don't have to tell you how interested the Pierce Island Committee is in Pierce Island, because if we didn't know that before bringing this up, we really know it now. So we've got a lot of interest in open space. We've got a lot of interest in recreation. We, the three of us, thought that the idea of raising the status of the Recreation Open Space Committee up, perhaps including additional members in it, perhaps staffing it additionally by city staff, so that we could begin to address some of these larger issues and needs that are coming forth with more comprehensive planning. We thought about dogs and cemetery because they relate. They have conflicting and complementary interests, in some cases, with recreation and open space. And one of the things that we talked about is that the value, one value that committees function for us as a council, is that they work out issues among the committee that are conflicting and complementary issues, and then bring them to the council. If we give a committee to each issue, we're essentially causing more work for ourselves rather than streamlining the public process. So in talking with citizens and talking with some of you about this, I think the idea is to have a discussion tonight about what some different options might be. For example, I've talked to several people about the notion of friends groups that would relate to a committee, a Friends of Pierce Island, a Friends of Jones Avenue, a Friends of Dogs, groups that would all connect within a larger committee, but that wouldn't just be separate self-standing committees. I think nobody is planning, wanting to do anything precipitously because there are some natural arcs of activity to some of these endeavors. But that's basically the kind of the update.
That's a fair summary. Appreciate that. I won't say anything at the present time, but just get discussion going and hear from people. Counsel Smith?
Thank you. One of the other reasons that this came up is my time when I was sitting on the REC board, we had some issues that we had to resolve through the REC board, through the Pierce Island Committee, and through the Dog Committee. So the issue came before the REC board. We then sent it to the Dog Committee, had to wait for them to have a meeting, then went to Pierce Island, had to wait for them to have a meeting, and then for it to come back to the REC board. So just to get a decision made on something was taking almost four months. And to me, that's just not good government. You don't -- to take so long to get a decision made is just not good government. Another thing, when you have those type of timelines, when you have a small issue that is brought up, and it takes so long to get it resolved, that little issue could balloon into a huge argument. And in some cases, we did see that. And that's another reason why, you know, and I'm not specify, I am not picking on any of these ones. It just happens to be an example that I witnessed. It is not in any intent in trying to get people off committees. It is not trying to get the people, the public, out of the process. It is not an attempt to, another way of term limits or any of those things, because I got phone calls on that, and once I explained to them that, you know, let people know that that's not what this is. The idea of certain blue ribbon committees, when blue ribbon committees are created, such as one we did for a blue ribbon committee on cruise ships, they're created, you have a specific goal in mind, what the mission is, the sunset date, and it's over. You go out, you do a specific task, and you come back, you make your report, and that's it. If it is intended to be a longer-term process, then they shouldn't be made in blue ribbon committees. They should be made freestanding committees. So that's another part of this process. If it turns out that one of these, you know, any of the blue ribbon committees that are out there, for instance, a consolidation committee is a blue ribbon committee. That's what we are. If we decide that consolidation should be something that we always look at as a city, then don't make it a blue ribbon. Let's make it a freestanding committee. Obviously, I'm being very sarcastic in that, but it's, that's the idea of this.
Thank you, Counsel Smith. Counsel Spear?
Since you are named the consolidation committee, I hope you don't take umbrage when I think a good idea would be to add a new committee to our list of committees. And the reason I thought about this, I shared all the same concerns you had in terms of communication between the committees, among the committees. The timeline that you mentioned, to me, is important. I also think each of the individual committees, by its nature, has a parochial view of whatever specific interest they're after, and we're not getting the holistic view of what's important for the city, whereas something like Recreation Parks and Open Space has a properly broad view of what's in the best interest of Portsmouth. At the same time, I'm trying to weigh that against the word consolidation. It obviously implies fewer people. And how do we arrive, how do we keep people involved in the system, plugged in, who are avid people of Pierce Island or recreation or dogs? So I thought, well, this is a good solution, but we don't have to take the other ones away. And the way I pictured it, I kind of liked the friends thing, was be, to keep the committees as they are, but have this new committee, Recreation Parks and Open Space, be made up of members of these other committees, all right? And this committee would be the interface that the council deals with. So the council has a question. We refer to the Recreation Parks and Open Space Committee for report back. And they would have the authority to deliberate. They wouldn't have to go to their constituent committees for four months of back and forth. They would have deliberative power to say, this is how, and they can be back to us in a month. So we get the benefits of communication. We get the benefits of, those members will have a broad view of the topic, in this case, Recreation Parks and Open Space. At the same time, we're keeping all the people who are currently on REC and Dogs and Pierce Island from, they keep participating in the system. So anyway, that was one idea that I was trying to kick around to achieve everyone's goals at the same time.
Thank you for putting that one out there. I saw Counsel Panellakis, then Counsel Kennedy, then Assistant Mayor.
I think this committee that we've set up for the parks and recreations and things like that would have a much stronger view from the people within the city. I find that this council overrides the REC board all the time. We never had the fact that the banners out there is never referred to the REC board, that maybe there might be some reason the board don't think it should be there. You know, so I think in making this committee, it's a strong solution. It says, this is where you go to get something done. You don't go to the city council. You go to the parks and recreation. That was my view of that.
Counsel Kennedy?
First of all, the committee that was set up to look at these committees is not, I, if it is a blue ribbon committee, then we should have maybe other people on it, too, as long, as well as with council. I thought it was just a council committee. But I'm having a hard time, sitting on the Pierce Island Committee, being active with the Dog Committee, I'm having a hard time looking at what the Cemetery Committee going and volunteering. These people, numerous people, are taking care of things like cemetery cleanups, monitoring the dog park, cleaning up the dog park we go to once, once a year, really good, making sure things are going. I mean, I just sat with the new president of the Dog Committee. The, you know, the Pierce Island, those guys are over there. They're looking, they're researching, they're keeping the history. You know, Ken, I guess the question I'd have for you is, is how many times did you have this dilemma? Was it once? Was it 10 times? And I find that there is everyday things, whether they walk in, they walk, you know, I know one man on the Pierce Island Committee that goes almost over every day to check all the trails, to make sure everything. What's amazing thing is, is the minimal amount of city hours, when we requested the city hours, the minimal amount of city hours that are partaking in all these committees. These people are putting time, energy, and they're putting it out there, and they're doing things that we don't have city employees doing. They're doing things that are concerned to our city. And they're also volunteering to support, now, it might be one little area, and maybe they can't, they don't want to be on an area that takes in a lot of, a lot of things. They just really want to concentrate on their area of interest. But, you know, I'm having a hard time shutting this great thing down.
Counsel, well, Assistant Mayor, and then Counsel.
Yeah, just a few words before Chris gives us her view. I agree with Esther and with Eric also. I would not, I would not want to see anything that restricted or even discouraged citizen participation. There are so many things going on in this city, which we should be all very proud of. There's some committees that have a lot of expertise in certain areas that we need, because I don't have it. And, but, you know, so I'm wondering if what we're really looking at, because I understand the frustration of something, a certain issue coming up once and having a long time before we get it resolved, maybe it's simply the structure of how the committees operate amongst themselves, and not, so that we're not limiting people from committees or consolidate, the word consolidation maybe is an incorrect word to use, but, so that there is some structure to the committee system, so that when an issue comes up that involves two or three different committees, they have to act in a certain time period. For example, we have an issue, we want to hear back by the next council meeting or by maybe in one month, so they have, they have that charge. Some committees are loosely formed in the sense that they don't meet on a regular basis. Maybe they meet certain months and not certain months, the minutes are a little scattered. And so maybe it's just that sort of system that needs to be beefed up a bit, which also beefs up the authority and the strength of the committees to take some of the, to give us the expertise that we have asked for. And that's the whole purpose to have the committee to begin with. And, and we do have a lot of little special interests that need attention. And so I guess maybe it's sort of like having a broad committee with subcommittees, whether you call it the Friends of Pierce Island, or the Friends of Dogs and Pets, or what have you, that it's a, a strong committee like a REC board, like a Recreation Board, that has some subcommittees that have the same people and has some teeth to it. That reports back to us in its time, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, Counsel, I'm sorry. Counsel Claiberg, I had Chris Dwyer, and then Ken Smith, then Counsel Claiberg.
And building on what both Esther and Jack have said, I think that there's the difference between a policy board, and we need policy boards, and then volunteers and Friends of, and I think there are multiple functions here. There's plenty enough of work for everyone. The kinds of activities that, the functions that you just described are fabulous volunteer functions and fabulous citizen, citizen special interest activities. And those are really important, and we have to figure out a way for those to continue. But that's different than a policymaking board. And what I'm submitting is, I think we need someone to be worrying about REC and open space policy. So, and I think it's compatible with what you both just said. Now, that can be members of these same boards, in the way that Counsel Spear described. It could be a reconfiguration of a superboard, not to get, do away with those functions, but to make sure that those functions are not the same as policy, so that when someone needs to come forth to us with a REC plan or an open space plan, someone needs to take on the line of action of putting stuff in the budget in the CIP to do that, that that's a policymaking board that's paying attention to policy and action and money, while the volunteers are also doing the special interest aspect of what they want to do. That could be complementary, dovetailed, separate, there are many ways to do it. I'm just feeling that the policy function is slipping away in light of people doing things that they want to do because they love an area or whatever. And I think both are important.
Counsel Smith?
Thank you. Counsel Kennedy, when you, all the functions you spoke of, I don't want to stop. I'm afraid that they will. A blue ribbon committee, by the mayor's snap of his fingers, could be gone, and all that hard work is gone. A blue ribbon committee has to be reestablished by the mayor each time there's a new, there's a new council. The hard work that's gone on on Pierce Island and in the cemeteries, especially with the cemeteries, the series that they have been doing out there is phenomenal work. I don't want that to stop. But as Counsel Dwyer has just said, you know, it's the policymaking. We're not getting minutes from these committees. We don't, so we don't have an idea of exactly what issues are they at. The Pierce Island Committee comes up here before us, they did an incredible job of the master plan, and it comes up before the budget, and they get slashed. Now, if we can create a board that takes the premise of these committees that has, and pull them together, give them some teeth, really create it so that they're a policy board, and get recognized, not only in our city charter, but they get recognized when it comes to the budget process. You have a committee such as Traffic and Safety. Traffic and Safety is a very important committee to this, to this community, but it's an ad hoc. There are no rules and regulations to that committee. There's no teeth to it. And that's unfortunate. We should have it. But that's, but, you know, I don't want to go off subject on it. So the idea of this is not to, to take away from the work that's being done, but when was the last official Dog Committee meeting held? I haven't seen minutes on it. You say there's a new president of the, of the Dog Committee. I haven't, okay, that's a dog group. Okay, so that's separate. But when was the last meeting of the, of the Dog Committee? Who's, who's the city council rep to the Dog Committee? These things, I don't have the answers to it. And because of that, I'm afraid that the good work that they've already started is slipping away, and we have to find a way of continuing the process that started. And this was one idea. This isn't cut and stone. It can, we can work it out. The idea of this is to have this conversation, but we have to do something before we lose the good work that's been started by these groups.
Counsel Claiberg, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize myself, since there's no formal parliamentary procedure here.
I was just gonna say, when I was thinking about this, I, the major concern I had was the people that are serving on all these committees. I mean, who do you pick, who stays on the committee and who doesn't stay on the committee if you consolidate them? And, and I think when I got these letters, the ones that we have in our packet from Peter Loughlin and Franklin Roth, talking about the real specific areas that those committees, you know, deal with, it made me think that, you know, we really do need these committees. And it made me think that people that are on those specific committees are there, like for instance, the Dog or the Pierce Island, they're there because they have a specific interest in that area. So to get rid of those committees, I think, is unfortunate. I kind of like your idea of maybe having a broader group that then reports to the city council that has representatives from all these committees, and so that everybody can stay involved that still wants to stay involved. I think I kind of like that idea. I thank you, Eric, for suggesting that, because I think that, that could be a possible solution, that, you know, we don't completely eliminate those committees, but we somehow come up with an idea where everybody can still stay involved, but there's another body that then reports to us.
I'm just gonna, at this point, I will say thank you, Counsel Claiberg, and say, you know, I appointed that committee, and I think that where we are now is, and with hard work involved, has brought us to a good place in that. I think we have some consensus here. And I think the consensus is that we want a lot of people to serve. So if we want a lot of people to serve, now we're figuring out how to do it. If there's people who walk trails and people who set policy, we've got to figure out how to differentiate that. And perhaps, and I offered this, it's similar to Eric's, you know, we heard Friends of, Friends of could mean people who are not appointed by city government. That's one scenario. Another scenario might also be, as you see with a number of nonprofits, you have the Board of Directors, let's say, this new committee, perhaps. And we can think about how many people serve and how many we need to appoint. And then you have a variety of standing subcommittees that exist, so that they can feed that committee, have the function that is suggested, and, you know, do, do the street function, and then there's the policy function. I think that if we, if we all agree that we want as many people that can practically be involved involved, and that we're not looking to get people out of the process, and I think we do all agree on that, then now we need to come up with a, now we need to come up with a new little chart, and we need to then vet that and do this again. Because I suspect that if we do this for these that we're looking at as a test case, then when we look at others, it will get easier, and we're developing our ability to understand how we all feel and what we all mean by what we say, and that kind of thing. Eric?
I just want to agree that I think the, there's, has been, needs to be more policy coming, bubbling up, because we, we're not going to have all the good ideas for the city of Portsmouth when you.
Intelligent as we are.
Yeah. I mean, we try. And then when I'm thinking of the membership of a policy committee like Parks and REC, I think having it made up of members of these, the existing boards, the Recreation Committee, the Pierce Island Committee, these are the people, as Counsel Kennedy said, who have the specific knowledge and the deep interest for those specific areas. I think they make a good case for being on a policy committee. Not all of them, because it would be unwealting, but they could have selected members.
There might be a way, without, without going drilling down too far into those details here, if we get to a general consensus, perhaps we could heave this back to the committee and say, for example, taking into consideration that idea, perhaps you have a situation where you have some representative members, although that can be a problem, because it's a workload problem. So you have to make sure that you have people at large who've been appointed that aren't all members of one committee or another. But let's say you come up with some formula whereby you have a supercommittee. There might be some representation. And then you have the other committees, the Dog, you know, the various and sundry that are subcommittees of that, that have policy interaction, that can still do their stuff. But you now have a way to steer policy. You keep all the people in the system. We need to have a go at trying to draw that chart. You first.
Yeah, just a suggestion, and not to get any misconception on what I think where we're going, and so that, I don't want the system to change too much. I think all people that serve on a board or a committee should be appointed by the mayor and the city council, so that we do have the expertise. And there is a vetting system, and a sense of pride also, so that it isn't just loosely formed. And I think maybe one thing that's simplified things, because sometimes it's in, it's in words and names, if a committee or board is a policy, then that is considered a board. And a board would have committees under it that would be still called committees. So therefore, we're not confusing with what that function is. So if, for example, there is a Pierce Island Committee that may report to the Recreation Board, the board actually has some policy teeth, and some decisions and some demands or requests can be made, and then funneled back to us in a timely fashion.
I think we're getting, I wonder, to trying to summarize here, I, do you feel comfortable, given the state of the discussion at this point in time, to say to the committee, would you like to have a go at trying to synthesize where we might be and bring it back again?
If I may.
Yeah, Counsel Smith?
Absolutely. I think we'd all agree to continue to work on it, because again, as I said last time, I'll say it again, this is not something we're trying to rush through. We're not trying to take anybody out of the process. But I also look at it very, very much like the citywide neighborhood groups. We have the, the city committee, neighborhood groups, and then you have all the other individuals that are not appointed by this. They're brought there because of their, their interest in their neighborhood. Same structure as we're talking about here. You have the policy-setting board, and then if someone is just interested in Pierce Island or Dog Committee, they can, they can, you know, you call it Friends of, or however you want to do it, but they're the ones that are actually doing the volunteering and helping. Because I don't, I don't want to see the, the, the series of lectures that have been going on at the Cemetery Committees gone away with. I think they're excellent. But yet, at the same time, is that part of the policymaking? Yes and no, because, well, someone has to fund them.
Well, let me just, and I'm gonna go to Counsel Kennedy in a second, but the consideration might be, and I offer this back, and if I see recognition, is if you have policy, then you have some that are operational in nature. Just policy, then operational in nature. And then you get to the next layer down, and it's the grassroots. That's another whole thing. But at the two levels that we appoint, we're talking those two levels, that's what seems to be evolving. Counsel Kennedy?
I agree with Assistant Mayor Blaylock. I think you need to have, I mean, I'm all right with that if we put into effect the committees, and we appoint those committees, the professionalism, make sure those committees are strong committees, good committees, and make sure that they have a mission, then we have an overall board. And I'd like to call it not recreational. I think the overall board needs to be open space, a broad term. And that you, that each committee selects a person to sit on that board. So we come from the committees, and we say, okay, to represent the Pierce Island Committee is going to be this person to that board. To represent the Dog Committee is going to be this person. To represent the Cemetery people, it's going to be this person. And that board can go, has representation, they meet at a meeting, and they can answer some of our questions. That's what I would like to see.
We're evolving, and I would even add to that, given the number of people involved, that there might be four people representative of committees and five people at large that are appointed, so you have a bigger group. But, but we're just kind of percolating here. Go ahead, Chris.
I thank Assistant Mayor Blaylock for bringing up the teeth. Teeth is what I'm interested in here. And I think teeth come, teeth comes, teeth come from an agenda that is partly something that we, as a council, ask a board to take on, and partly something that the board says to the council, these are things we want to take on. I think the Economic Development Commission is such a great example of this, with the action plan that's done every year that dovetails into the objectives. And the reason they have so much power, and the reason a lot of us are kind of groupies for the EDC, is because it's really dovetailed to the rest of the work of the council. And we see the work being done there, and then it comes to the council. We know it's going to happen, and we know when we want their endorsement. And I think, I'd love every committee to be like that, because I, I mean, I think what we're trying to do here is to make sure that people aren't frustrated by their committee service, saying, do those people up there care about us? And that we actually are all working on the same agenda. So I think that's exactly what we need to align here.
Counsel Smith?
And the, and the other way to look at it, too, is the people that are working with the committees on the subcommittees the committees on the subcommittees and, and working towards being members on the larger committees, they also have a chance to start getting that institutional knowledge and getting up to speed on the issues as they're coming forward so that when they are appointed onto the, onto the meetings, they're ready to go. You know, you, you look at some of our land use boards, if we didn't have the, the alternates positions, you know, you put some people on there, it's gonna take them a short, it's gonna take them a while, six months to a year to get up to speed on issues. Now, and, and by doing it this way, you know, then you're able to work with the committees, you're seeing what's going on, you're up to speed on the issues, then you get appointed into them and you have a good rotation of people who wish to serve. And then people that say, you know what, I don't wanna do the policy portion anymore, I really just wanna focus on this, you can slide off the, and, but still be active.
Well, I think, and, and Counselor Dryer raises a good one, and maybe we can get close to closure with this. If you envision the rolling action plan of the Economic Development Commission, and you know that the Economic Development Commission actually creates a number of subcommittees to do specific tasks-
Right.
That, that we're now taking committees that do specific tasks, like the DOG committee or, or, or something, and now we're trying to marry it with a policy board that has a rolling action plan. That's the direction we're heading in. I think that's, and it, and it takes us a while to all articulate this and understand what everybody else means. So I think we can do that with ample opportunities to serve, maybe even more opportunities to serve.
Yeah, I think so.
And, and that's a good thing. So we'll, we'll, remember, there's, there's, there's those operational, do you check the, the trail? And then there's the rolling action plan of the Open Space Committee that goes from everywhere, from recreational planning to... So I think we're starting to have some sense.
Budget lines as well.
Maybe we, we could ask if, if, if you can, maybe attempt a, a, a new organizational drawing of that and perhaps some bulleted functions and, and, and then perhaps we could have a go at it again. And I think we're starting to evolve.
Good.
That'd be great.
That's what politicians do, they evolve.
I think we'll be happy to do that.
All right. Is everyone reasonably comfortable with, with the discussion at this point in time? Wanna raise anything else?
Thank you to you three for starting this and-
Absolutely.
-being willing to continue it.
Happy to.
Thank you. It's hard to do, but I think we're over a certain hump and that's a good thing. And I think we might even find more ways to do things, which is good. We now need to close this meeting. Tell Howard out in the sound booth, then we're gonna begin our next meeting. Hopefully I'll ask him.